Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the May 28th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Thank you for joining us in this virtual meeting format. For work sessions like this one, there is no opportunity for public comment. Those wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the live stream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by calling into one of the phone numbers listed for this meeting on the Public Webcasts and Meeting Materials page of the City of Eugene website. Thank you again for joining us today. I call the May 28th, 2025 Work Session of the Eugene City Council to order, and I will now turn to the City Manager to introduce today's first topic, which is the Work Session Review of the 2024 Implementation of Bond Measure to Fixed Streets and Pavement Management Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm actually really excited about today's work session because we're hitting two topics that have been a priority for the council for many years. One, our infrastructure, in particular our streets, and the second around housing. So we're going to start off with our streets, and I believe Katie Marwitz is going to lead that presentation. So I'll just turn it over to you, Katie.
Thank you. I'll share my screen. Okay, thank you. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Mayor and Councillors. My name's Katie Marwitz. I'm a Principal Civil Engineer in Public Works Engineering, and today I get to present to you the Annual Report on the Voter Approved Bond Measure as well as the Pavement Management Report. So this is a summary of what I will walk you through today. And as has been the case in a couple of the previous years when I've made this presentation, I recognize you're working through some really heavy and difficult topics day to day. So I hope this presentation can be a good news presentation for you, and much of it will be similar in substance and structure to previous year's presentations. To get us grounded in where we started, the 2017 Bond Measure was approved by voters in November of 2017, with the project starting in 2019. So the Bond Measure included 91 named streets and an average of $1 million a year for active transportation. And it's important to note, so this will be the last year where I'm focusing on the 2017 Bond Measure, and next year we'll transition into talking about the first year of the 2022 Voter Approved Bond Measure. An important part of each of our successful Bond Measures has been in the built-in accountability, and that really speaks to promises made and promises kept. So each of the Bond Measures has had two layers of accountability. So that's our Street Repair Review Panel and also our Auditor Process, and I'll speak to both of those. So the first layer of accountability is our Street Repair Review Panel. We call the SRRP. So I want to take some time to really show appreciation to this community-led group. The group this year varied between eight and nine members and represented this cross-section that you'll see on the screen of the community. The community has really great perspectives and a wide variety of backgrounds, experiences, and they really, it's a really valuable conversation to meet with them. And the panel met three times this year, but over the fall and winter. And in their cover memo to this year's report, they wrote, "We believe the community is getting a good return for its investment in street repairs, and the bond funds were being used wisely to meet the objection, the objectives of the ballot measure. A functioning transportation system is essential to our community's safety and economy, and the bond is an important component of maintaining the city's infrastructure and creating local jobs." The second layer of accountability is the Annual Auditor Process. So the Auditor's Report is included in the Annual Report, and it's part of the SRP Report in Appendix D. So even though I'm going to work really hard today not to read the slides to you, I think it's really important, these bullets, and so I will read these bullets to you from the Auditor's Report that kind of concludes at the end of, the end of 2024. So they said, "We noted no variances between expenditures and supporting documentation. We noted that each expenditure was for an eligible cost, and they also noted no differences in the procurement files as compared to the procurement requirements." Next, I want to dive into the SRP Report itself. So the reported self is available online. You can search Eugene SRP. You can also search Eugene Bond Measure to Fixed Streets, and this report will be on that page. And as well, that website also has several of the previous year's reports if you want to go, go back and read them. Some of the report highlights are shown here, including our data from the ADA Transition Plan, our CAP 2.0 Updates, project-specific pages, and then about the overlap with the end of the 2017 Bond and the beginning of the 2022 Bond Measure. And in between the next couple of slides that have substance about the Bond, I've included some before and after photos of some recently completed projects that include bond funds. This first before and after is Coburg Road. One of our principal arterials in town. This is at Coburg Road looking south towards the river. And this paving was completed this last year as night work. And this is the after. This next slide is a list of the projects that were completed in 2024, as well as the original 2017 Bond Measure map that was included in that measure that shows all of the projects that were listed in the measure to be completed. I will note, you'll see the bubble in the middle of the screen. So the first phase of the Broadway Project that I was able to speak to this group about earlier this year, that contract has been awarded, and construction will likely begin in just the next couple of weeks for that work. And then similarly, the 24th Hilliard and Alder Project is another that circled on the screen, and it's out for advertisement currently, and construction will begin this year as well. This next before and after is at the High Street Bikeway Project. So this before photo is at 18th Avenue looking north. And then this is the after, the after photo showing the addition of the bikeway. So these next couple of slides really show data over the life of the bond, where the, the data kind of builds on itself over the life of the bond. So starting with this timeline, looking back to 2021, we anticipated in the SRP Report that we would exhaust all of the bond funds and would need to utilize local funds like the gas tax to complete the work. But at that time, we didn't have a projected amount. Fast forward a year to 2022, we forecasted that we'd be about, we'd need about $3.3 million overrun over the life of the bond. Forward again to 2023, we were able to reduce that projected overrun by about $1.2 million, so our, our overrun was expected to be about 2.1. And then to this last year at the end of 2024, that projected overrun has been reduced again to just under 2 point million. We estimate it's about $1.9 million, which overall is about 4% of the bond total. This table also shows some more data of the bonded glance. What I want to highlight here is this third column, that's the total sidewalk ramp improvements. So over 1,800 sidewalk ramps have been upgraded over the bond period, and that number jumps to over 2,000 ramps total for all projects during this period, including private development. So as we are formally transitioning from one bond to the next, I wanted to include this side by side of the two bond measures just to highlight some of the similarities and some of the differences in the two, in the two bonds. So the 2017 Bond Measure on the left, that was $51.2 million, 91 listed streets, $5 million for active transportation. So the next bond, which was our 2022 Bond Measure, was $61.2 million, 42 listed streets, and $15 million set aside for walking, biking, safety opportunities, and then street trees. In continuing the theme of the transition between the Bond Measures, during the design of the 2024 projects, we identified a few opportunistic additions that allowed us to actually get a jumpstart on the 2022 Bond Measure. So those included two, two paving projects, one of which was our first bond-funded unimproved street improvement, and that was on Van Avenue. We also were able to package several small identified pedestrian and safety improvements. And then we also had one bicycle-focused improvement that we were able to complete in 2024. And this is the third and last of the before and afters. So this is 8th Avenue at Pearl Street looking east. And this is the same view following the completion of that transformation project. And that project included a whole host of funding sources, but it did include bond funds. So now I want to transition to talking about the Pavement Management Report. And as a reminder, this report, the Pavement Management Report, is a snapshot looking forward in time, as opposed to looking backwards when we're talking about last year's projects. So this is forward-looking, in contrast to the pavement, the project specifics that are looking at what was completed last year. This, this report is also included in the Annual Report. It's in Appendix E. We know that our street infrastructure is the largest city asset, with over 1,400 lane miles of streets and almost 50 centerline miles of off-street shared-use paths. And this graph shows the condition of the system as a whole, and over 60% is in very good and excellent condition. And this really tells a positive, a positive story about the street system, largely due to the success of these voter-approved bond measures. And remember, over the last several years, we've really worked to evolve the discussion from just talking about the backlog. We used to talk about just that big lump sum total to now talking about the backlog plus the condition index, which really tells the story of how the roads are doing and what the roads really look like. We're trying to also keep an eye by street classification. And when we talk about pavement condition, you'll probably see and hear me use the term PCI, which as a reminder is Pavement Condition Index. And what that really is, is just a numerical score like on a report card. And then looking forward to the future, would like to get to the place where we're not talk, not only talking about the condition of the system, but we're also talking about that in relation to the needs of the system financially, and ideally that the annual funding would then meet that need on an annual basis. And over time, just to show it graphically, we have seen kind of that roller coaster of the backlog, where there was the sharp decrease with the start of the Bond Measures. We experienced some flattening out, and then we've seen the eventual rise again as the original Bond Measure streets are now needing rehabilitation again, partnered with a whole bunch of things like a global pandemic, inflation, construction prices, supply chain challenges. And now we're utilizing bond funds to a wider distribution, a bond, a wider distribution of things. Eugene's current overall PCI, so that's the score, is 73, which by industry standards is considered a very good rating. So our next challenge is to address the PCI rating by street classification. So improving overall street quality, safety, and continuing to look for ways that we can be cost-effective. So looking at this graph here, you can see it, the numbers by classification. And we sit, when we see major arterials at the top of that, those are our biggest streets. So those are a Coburg Road, a River Road, a West 11th, and then going down by classification, which is really size and use, down to our local neighborhood streets. And you can see the target PCI for each one of these street types and look, areas where we can look to really focus our improvements and ways to be creative to make targeted improvements within those. And then before I wrap up today, I wanted to look ahead to a couple of upcoming highlights. So as I mentioned before, the first phase of Broadway Project is preparing to begin in the next couple of weeks. Also, we're planning to come back to this group. We're scheduled to come back in just under a month to talk about our work regarding sidewalks. We'll also be coming back to council later this year to provide an update on Franklin Boulevard. I'm also looking forward to revamping our SRP process to align with the new elements of the 2022 Bond Measure. And then as for construction for 2025, we have seven street projects scheduled, as well as five individual projects that land in that bike, pet, and safety improvement. And with that, I welcome questions.
Thank you so much, Katie and City Manager, for that presentation. Great information. I'm sure lots of discussion to follow up. And so I'll now open the floor for council discussion and see councillor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Katie, for the presentation. I always find these very interesting. Is there a place the public can go to see what their street is classified as?
There is. We do have a place online. We have street classification maps where you can go and look at your neighborhood, or look at your street and see if it, what is classified as, yes.
Great, thank you. And that's on the engineering website?
Um, that's, that's a great question. I'll have to follow up. I can provide you the, the specific link to that. I don't remember if it's mapped through the engineering website or not.
Thank you. I, I actually do. I don't know about my colleagues. I get quite a few questions, though, about street maintenance, speeds, what we're allowed to mess with, what we're allowed to implement in the way of signage and warning lights, things like that. And I know a lot of that comes down to street classification, and I have, where, where can I find out what, how my street's classified? So I, I know there's people, at least in west, southwest Eugene, that are interested in that. Thank you.
Councillor Kacinski.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and all the work you've been doing to help keep our streets from, in good condition. I know that with the pandemic and in 2020, there were some delays that came in, and like things that were supposed to be done, you know, in certain years got pushed out in further years. Are we sort of back on track and kind of getting caught up and back to like sort of the schedule we'd be hoping for? Have we kind of like moved past that sort of space of delay?
Yes, and one of the, one of the things that happened as part of that is that we were, most of the Bond Measure, instead of it being a five-year Bond Measure, we, we still had the same amount of funding, but that work extended into the sixth year. But now this is, we're at the tail end of that now and still on track in terms of when we, the next Bond Measure, the 2022 Bond Measure, we scheduled that for the vote in '22 with the implementation starting in 2025. So we are right on track to begin that work. And actually, this last year, as I mentioned, we were able to actually push some projects forward to try to get a jumpstart. So we're in a great spot in terms of scheduling and being able to move forward with projects.
Okay, that's, that's great to hear, because I know it was a challenging few years there. So, thank you.
Councillor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Katie, for the presentation. And appreciation to the team that recently repaved the, or agate right off of 30th, which was in incredible disrepair, and I suspect those were bond dollars as it was part of the original bond proposal before it was on the ballot. Similar to councillor Groves' inquiry, when, when a project is related to bond dollars while it's being repaired, is there an effort similar to what ODOT does to indicate, you know, signage onsite, your bond dollars at work, just so, so the community's aware as to why a particular project is, is being undertaken? And the speed and efficiency which the team did undertake that particular repaving was remarkable and is, remains greatly appreciated. The next step I would submit are sidewalks in that, off that stretch, but that's a work session for next month. So I don't want to, I don't want to confuse the issue. But back to signage. What sort of public-facing outreach beyond the net exists or opportunities to inform the public in, in the middle of, of a project?
Sure. We actually do a couple of things, so I'll, I will work to address your question, but I think it goes outside of just signage. I know you specifically asked about signage. But ahead of a project, we, we typically send out a series of three postcards to not only the street that we'll be doing work on, but the neighborhood streets around it. So there's, it's usually about 18 months in advance. We send one that says, hey, this is coming, you know, in like the 18-month to two-year timeframe, if you have intention on making a new connection, now is the time. We then send another one when we're about six to nine months out that says, hey, remember, we're still coming. Here's the potential timeline. And then we send out a third postcard once the contract has been awarded to those people that says, and here's the contractor, here's what we anticipate for schedule. So outside of that, also then when there's, the construction is happening, we actually have a series of two signs. So it's actually four signs, because we'll put two signs on each street at each end. One talks about the Bond Measure specifically that says, hey, this is a bond-funded project, and it lists the street. And then the second is more of a And then the second is more of a informational sign that says, hey, if you want more information, go here. So those are the signage pieces that are included. Um, outside of that, for the, like, broader, more broad community, we do a, a, a weekly road report also that's published that lists all, kind of all of the streets and what the impacts will be, um, anticipated for that next week. Um, we have a really great PIO staff that helps us with that kind of work. Um, and so there are a number of places where we're advertising that. Um, and we also are continuing to look at ways that we can make more of an impact and share more information.
Councillors Lanka.
Yeah, first of all, thanks for the presentation. These are always great. Um, and thank you to the Eugenians for seeing the value in this and, and constantly reapproving these, because, um, the road bonds, because they're, they're invaluable to our, our quality of life. And, and I'm glad people see the value, so that they keep reapproving them and paying for them. Um, that, I, I think a big part of that is that accountability mechanism we put back in place that, that councillor Bettman and I put in place to have all those different accountability measures. But the biggest part of that accountability measure was the process, promises made, promises kept. We did that list, and we said, these are the projects we are going to do. This is what you are buying for this bond measure, and we did them. And we constantly are, are making sure that that gets done, and we're doing it as best as possible can, even with cost increases that we've seen over the last couple of years, though. I, I think that's an important part of, of, of when we move forward. Um, I think it's great that we're finally reducing the backlog. I skipped over it real quick, and I didn't catch it. What used to be two-hundred-and-twenty-five million-dollar backlog back in the day, what are we down to?
Uh, that's, that's a really great question. I should, I needed to look that up less, just a minute. Let me actually look in the report. My memory says we're just, we're at like a hundred, uh, I should just look and, while I'm talking. But it's in, it's in the low hundreds. I think one, one-twenty, one-forty, somewhere. That's the range. I can certainly look up the specifics in the report, that it's in the report, but that's, that's the general range of here. So it's like that steep, I know at one point we got below a hundred. That was kind of like the bottom. We leveled out, and then we're starting to see a little bit of, a little bit of increase again.
Why are we seeing a increase in the backlog?
Um, a couple of things. One is the streets, you know, from two thousand and eight that are now approaching twenty years. They need rehab again. Um, our prices are more expensive. And also, we're using the bond funds in a wider net. So, you know, we have dedicated funds now that are going to the walking biking safety, which is fantastic. There's a lot of needs within the street system, but it does reduce the over amount, overall amount of money that we're putting towards rehabbing streets. And that was a conversation we had when we were considering the new bond measure. And we made, we made that choice to include those other really important elements. Uh, but it does mean that less money is going towards street rehab, but other, now that some of the other money is going to those other really important needs. So that will contribute as well, as we continue to see a slight uptick in that.
Right, yeah, I think those are crucially important alternative means of transportation need infrastructure as well. And when we did the first bond, I put the motion forward to have a five percent of it go towards, um, bike and ped, and that was a doubling. And then we did, I did another one that got it to ten percent, and that was a doubling, and now I think it's a lot more than that. So I, but I think that's, infrastructure is really, really important. I had a question about the, the Lane County parking lot on, between seventh and eighth Pearl and High, or Pearl and whatever street that is, Hilliard. Um, and, and, uh, I think it's great that we, the Eighth Avenue picture you showed looks fantastic, and the putting the trees on Pearl, that was a great ad. But the most visible part of that whole parking lot is on the Seventh Avenue side. It's our major street. And it looks horrible. It's kind of embarrassing. It's just weeds and looks, and there's no trees there, except for the big old ones. Um, so like no treatment has been given to that, and that's the most visible part of it. I asked staff about that, um, because, um, they said it was a temporary use, the parking lot by Lane County. It's been a temporary use for a decade, and probably will be for another decade. Um, and, and that to me is not a temporary use, but our code doesn't do anything about that. Um, and it doesn't allow us, it, it, we wouldn't allow that if we're a private development. So I'm wondering what we can do to enhance that corridor there, uh, in, 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 make that part of the, the very visible part of our downtown more appealing.
Sure, and I know that, uh, I think I invited Jennifer to be a panelist on here too. I think she's probably more appropriate to respond, to respond to that one. Jennifer, are you available?
Um, hi there. So, you know, I don't think that we have a, an answer for you today on that Seventh Avenue cross-section. I know that there have been a number of projects that we've been looking at as far as changing the lane configuration on Seventh and Sixth and Seventh avenues, and that would potentially give us an opportunity to kind of change what that cross-section looks like. But as far as the, the lot development piece, we're going to have to look into that and, and get back to you. That is, feels like a combination of both Public Works and, um, PDD kind of conversation to track down details on.
Yeah, some landscaping at a minimum would be a good idea, because it's, and, and getting it spruced up a bit. Um, I suppose that's in our right way.
Well, the sidewalk pieces, yes.
So the landscaping parts of county, okay. Um, just lastly, I love that, the, the core, the, the, the crosswalk art at the farmer's market and the, and the Saturday market. That's awesome. It's beautiful. I saw it for the first time this week. It's beautiful. Thanks.
Councillors, additional questions? I have a couple that are very quick, Katie. Um, add myself into the queue. First, first question is, uh, really appreciate the heads-up and to the community, what you described in terms of three postcards going out to, um, areas of projects and neighborhoods and surround to let people know something's, something's out there, something's coming kind of soon, something is actually happening, and here's how it's going to happen and what the schedule is. That is wonderful. Um, and really appreciate hearing about the upcoming work on Broadway, Twenty-Fourth and Hilliard, Alder, um, and looking forward to the Franklin Boulevard and the sidewalks updates. Um, your note in the slide about seven streets and five bicycle and pedestrian and safety improvements. Um, is it easy for you to quickly list what those seven projects are?
Uh, it, yes, yes, it is. Just a moment. Okay, so projects that we have scheduled for twenty-twenty-five will be, so we already talked about Broadway, will be, we're anticipating work on Grant Street, Hay Street, and Pierce Street. Those will be grouped together. We're also, uh, grouping streets on Wesley and Plumtree out in southwest Eugene. We will be repaving a section of McLean Boulevard in twenty-twenty-five. Um, we are actually starting a project already to repave Commerce Street, um, out south of West Eleventh. Uh, I think that's, that's all, that's all of the paving, and then we have a couple of, uh, pedestrian, um, pedestrian improvement projects, some traffic calming projects. We'll be doing some sidewalk infill along Bertelson, and another sidewalk connection piece up off Empire Park, Empire Park Drive, just west of Highway ninety-nine. Um, and we'll be doing some lighting along, along Bailey Hill Road as part of that Wesley and Plumtree work.
Great.
So I think I captured most of them.
Thank you so much for that overview. Um, if there is a, and I believe that there is, uh, but a location where the public's able to quickly gather what is coming soon in terms of construction. Uh, this is exciting progress and an important upgrading to our city's operating system that, that happens on a pretty regular basis each, each summer construction season. Um, so that is great. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, thank you again for the report. Appreciate it, as always. Well done. I don't want to put words in your mouth, and you didn't say this, but I want to, I want to explore some information, and you have it. So y- you mentioned that eh, each, each successive bond, as councillor Zelenka reminded us, we have spent an increasing amount of the bond funds on non-backlog-related items, to the point where the backlog, because of this and other, these decisions and others, the backlog started to grow again. My question is this, what's our current percentage and what would be the percentage we would want to remain at if we said, hey, don't ever allow the backlog to grow again? Do you have a number in your head?
We can certainly follow up with a number. I know that when we were having the, um, discussions around what this twenty-twenty-two bond measure would be, we presented those numbers as kind of like scenarios of, hey, we could choose X, Y, or Z amounts. Um, so we have those numbers available. They're not numbers that I have off the top of my head, but we have those numbers, and I could certainly, I could certainly send them to you.
I, I, and I would tell you that when a, any future bond comes up, that will certainly be my question. What's the percentage we want to avoid, to, uh, to avoid the backlog growing again? So if, if you'll know that at that point, forewarned is for, you know, something. So, thanks.
Yep. Um, if I could just jump in here too, since I'm on camera anyway. Um, but there was a slide that, um, councillor Clark, that Katie put up that talked about kind of that combining of the backlog with the condition index number. And that's partly why we transitioned to looking, considering the pavement condition index for all of these streets, because that backlog number, um, is so affected by changes in economy and costs of construction that that gave us kind of a, a more accurate viewpoint of looking at what is the actual condition of the streets, not just what is the cost to repair it. So I think that that is the next step that we're going to, that we'll be able to take both of those two pieces and come up with, uh, what is an annual amount of money that we need to balance both of that backlog and that condition index.
Councillor Zelenka.
Yeah, um, related to that, um, we purposely did this, that we added money to these other alternative modes, because we thought they were important to promote. And so we purposely added more money there, and it's a zero-sum game. So we did increase the amount of the bond, but we ended up having more, you know, the alternative modes on purpose. So it's a council decision. Um, and, and, uh, if you also recall, Mike, the, 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 uh, the original uh, revenue committee out of the council, the recommendation was only partially, partially, uh, adhered to. It also had other revenue sources that would have solved this problem and, um, uh, much more eliminated the backlog. But the council at that time chose just to do the bond. They didn't do, for instance, the, the garbage truck fee. Garbage trucks cause a lot of damage. They're very heavy, and they're all throughout every neighborhood. So we didn't do that. We didn't do a couple of other things that, so there was a full package that would have more, um, adequately addressed the, 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 the needs of, of the bonds. Um, one more question about the report, though. On, on page five, you talk about Vision Zero. Can you, for those who don't know what Vision Zero is, describe it, but then talk about the progress we've made in the last year or so?
Sure. So, uh, Vision Zero is an, is an effort. Um, there are a number of committees around the nation who have taken it on to eliminate, uh, serious injury and, uh, serious injuries and deaths along the corridor, or in the, in the city. So what we have done with Vision Zero, and we continue to do, is when we're scoping projects now, we're identifying, we're working to identify all of the needs of the projects. So when we go into a project now, we're not saying, hey, we're going to just repave this street. We say, what are the needs of the corridor? And one of the things that we look at is, is this a Vision Zero corridor? Does it have a Vision Zero intersection in it? And so that's part of what we're incorporating into when we're looking at preliminary designs even, saying, okay, if this has been identified, what are the improvements we can make? And for example, we have a, a project that we're beginning to scope for twenty-twenty-six that does include a Vision Zero intersection. So we're putting those design elements into the first conversation. It's not an afterthought. It's part of like the building of the project from the base, to say, what are some targeted improvements? Whether that's, you know, speed-related, design-related. So we're incorporating that into the design of the projects from the beginning now.
Thank you. Thank you, staff. And seeing no additional questions or no additional discussion, uh, just thank, thank Katie, um, for this presentation today. And that concludes our first agenda item in this work session. Um, I will now turn to the city manager to introduce the second topic, which is the Housing Implementation Pipeline two-year report.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm just going to, uh, turn this over to our community development director, Will Doughty, to introduce.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. Um, my name is Will Doughty, Community Development Director, and, um, we're excited to talk with you about the HIP, Housing Implementation Pipeline. Uh, I just thought before we'd start, uh, it'd be helpful to put a little bit of context on this. Um, as you well know, we began initial work of, on the HIP in twenty-twenty-one, in part because of the challenges we were facing as a community around housing and homelessness. Um, but if anything, since that time, the context for making change has gotten harder. And this, uh, and this coordinated effort, um, that's represented by the HIP, uh, multiple city council actions taken since then, um, all of that has just become more, more necessary. And so just, uh, kind of setting that as a, as a contextual reminder that, um, we started this because of a real need that we felt, and, and I think we feel that need even more acutely today. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll hand it over to Amber Friedman, who will, uh, start with the formal presentation. Thanks.
Thanks, Will. All right, just gonna get my presentation sharing here.
And Amber, it sounds like your audio is very quiet. If you could turn up the volume just a little bit, or the microphone?
Better now?
Just a little.
No. How about now? Okay, great. Well, now that you can hear me, thanks for having me. Um, as Will said, I'm Amber Friedman, the Housing Implementation Pipeline Analyst and Community Development. Uh, but for this presentation, I'm representing a cross-city collaboration. Also includes folks from our planning, city manager's office, building and permit services, public works engineering, city attorney's office, and many others across the organization. This really is a team effort. I'm here today to give you an update on the first two years of the city's Housing Implementation Pipeline, which we fondly refer to as the HIP. I'll start by sharing a quick reminder about the background and the intent of the HIP, followed by some highlights focusing on our key takeaways, info about the current state of housing and shelter in Eugene, updates on goals and challenges, a word about refinements that we made to the HIP, and then a look towards the future. The HIP is a cross-departmental, five-year work plan for the city. The work plan coordinates current and future city resources, goals, and priorities, all using a systems-thinking approach to housing. The HIP addresses the full continuum, um, housing continuum, from folks experiencing unsheltered homelessness to market-rate housing, and then our just, our overall housing supply. Uh, as you may remember, council approved the HIP unanimously in twenty-twenty-two, and it went into operation July of that year. The HIP includes built-in review periods, so staff share updates to council for each six-month period, and we prepare a comprehensive report at two-year intervals. Today, I'm sharing content from the first report, which covers fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. The intention of the HIP is to provide a housing roadmap with benchmarks and an order of operations. The HIP guides our internal work, aligns with the city's strategic priorities around housing and shelter, establishes goals and metrics, serves as a container to clarify policy and have discussion, identifies tools and processes, sets timing for exploration of new tools, measures outcomes, and provides an equity lens that can be applied to programs and policies. As Will shared, a lot has changed since the HIP was written in twenty-twenty-two. Housing has become harder and more expensive to build, um, than what we forecasted three years ago. So these days, more money is needed to build and preserve fewer units. So many of the assumptions that were used to set our goal targets in twenty-twenty-two haven't turned out as expected. In writing the two-year report, a couple key takeaways emerged. One is the needs of housing across the housing continuum exceed the resources and capacity of the city's programs and staffing. On our current trajectory, the city is unlikely to meet the five-year HIP goals for income-qualified housing. At the current pace, we're estimating there'll be around four hundred units completed. we're estimating there'll be around 400 units completed by the end of the HIP period. So without intervention and increased investments, it's unlikely we'll reach the goal of 835 new income-qualified units. A second takeaway is that lack of adequate housing stock is a root cause of homelessness. This takeaway is based on the research of Greg Colburn and Clayton Aldern, and it's supported by our local experience. We have a vacancy rate of around 3%. So there's a lack of affordable rental units in Eugene's housing market. We hear from our shelter providers that it's difficult to move people into housing because there's simply no housing available to move into. Um, and we hear the sentiment echoed again by our local housing authority who sees 25% of Section 8 housing vouchers returned unused because the voucher holder cannot find a rental with which they can use it. So we know that additional housing units are needed to successfully move people from shelter into safe and stable housing and that creating more homes takes time and resources. So until Eugene has an adequate supply of diverse housing, the community will need creative and alternative shelter solutions and options. As I mentioned before, the HIP views housing on a continuum. And we start with folks who are unsheltered and we move along to sheltered and then housed across all types and price points. Using one-time pandemic-related funds and through partnerships with Land County and other nonprofit providers, the city worked hard to set up several new shelter programs and sites over the past four years. City shelter, city-supported shelter spaces increased by 64% in that time with 670, 75 spaces in operation at the end of fiscal year 24. In total, we have approximately 1,000 shelter spaces across Eugene, but we have over 3,400 people experiencing homelessness nightly. So despite our progress, that leaves approximately 2,400 people unsheltered each night. And as you well know, Eugene is facing a housing crisis across all income levels and housing types. In 2023, the median home sale price was $479,000 and the average monthly rent for a two-bedroom with utilities was 1,800. A household of four would need an annual income of over $73,000 a year in order to afford that rent or $160,000 a year in order to purchase a home without being considered cost burdened. In Eugene, we have about 77,000 households. Of those, 25% earn less than $30,000 a year. So that means we need rental units that cost less than $750 a month for almost 20,000 households or homeownership opportunities that cost less than $90,000. Before we move on to the goals progress portion, I wanted to share a reminder about the levers and the influence that the city has in housing development. The city doesn't build or manage shelter sites or, or housing. Instead, Eugene uses property, um, I'm sorry. Eugene uses tax incentives, fee waivers, limited grants, and other administrative leverage to make housing projects more feasible for developers and housing agencies. So a balanced combination of land and infrastructure, public policy, market feasibility, and capital all need to be in place for successful housing development. Moving on to our HIP goals progress, there is a review of every two and five-year goal as of June 2024 in your packet, and that's going to be labeled as two-year report appendix A. In the interest of time, I won't be going into details on most of the progresses, the goals that are still in progress. But in two years, we have successfully completed two goals from the homelessness section of the housing continuum, which focuses on both sheltered and unsheltered community members. As I mentioned, the city doesn't manage shelter sites. So the success of this area relies on our collaborations with Land County and our local nonprofit providers. On the next few slides, completed goals are marked with a green check mark. The first goal completed was 75 new low-barrier shelter beds added to our shelter inventory with the opening of the River Avenue Navigation Center in August of 2022. This Land County project received initial support from the city of Eugene and the state of Oregon. The city also supported the successful pilot of a street outreach team through contract with Land County, and that pilot served 245 people. The goals marked with a yellow half circle indicate our works in progress. For example, increasing stability of unhoused individuals and developing a fully coordinated response system, response protocol is a goal that's still in progress. We have discontinued the goal of building more shelter. Instead, we're focusing state resources on maintaining what we already have in place. Income-qualified housing goals also saw some progress. We exceeded the two-year target of 50 units of new permanent supportive housing units with the opening of 102 new PSH units. These new developments included apartments for very low and extremely low-income households experiencing chronic homelessness and single-room occupancy apartments for youth entering independence from foster care. We also exceeded our new homeownership target by 10 units with the opening of 70 units at the Peace Village Co-op. The city invested more than $1.2 million in Peace Village through Affordable Housing Trust Fund and city fee assistance. Despite these successes, overall income-qualified housing production and housing preservation is lagging behind our two-year targets. For example, 196 new affordable units have been completed towards a goal of 310 units and 56 units have been preserved towards a goal of 95. The goal to support units with city fee assistance that weren't receiving any other city assistance has been discontinued because income-qualified projects need multiple layers of subsidy in order to reach financial feasibility. So all projects have received some other city's support and therefore didn't count in this category. There's only one two-year goal for overall housing, that's create an anti-displacement plan. As noted in the goal language, additional resources would be needed in order to begin this effort. Uh, moving on to how we've done overall, um, our new permitted housing units and our new occupied downtown units. With this first graph, we show that net new housing units that have been issued permits during FY '23 and '24. Um, we have a dash line on the graph that's showing the HIP goal is to reach 6,000 permitted units in five years. And then I have a solid line showing our actuals from the first two years. So overall, we are on track for our permitted units. However, development and preservation of income-qualified units is not on pace to meet five-year goals. Housing isn't being built or preserved in the quantities that we forecasted. On this graph, the green line represents new construction and the blue lines show preservation. Like in the previous graph, the dashed line is the target and the solid line shows our actuals for the first two years. We've had 624 downtown units open during the first two years of the HIP. There are several more downtown developments in the pipeline for construction. The projects in the pipeline are likely to exceed our five-year goal of 1,000 units with no further intervention. Um, so that's good news. And all of the projects, all the units that have been completed so far have been around the edges of town, however, and none have been built in the downtown core. We've had many challenges in the first two years of the HIP. You can read more in the report, but I brought five to highlight for you. One is that funding sources fluctuate, including our federal HUD funds, which have been declining, and our local construction excise tax funds that rise and fall with local construction volume. Two is that one-time funds, especially pandemic-related, um, have been really impactful. But ongoing solutions are needed to support our affordable housing development. The city fee assistance program used one-time funds to pay for city fees and enabled many projects to be financially viable, but that program needs to be recapitalized in order to support any new projects. Three, financial challenges, including elevated construction costs, rising insurance rates and high interest rates continue to negatively impact housing development at all price levels. Four, growing our housing stock, especially our income-qualified housing, is not an easy feat. In addition to the challenges I just mentioned that affect all housing projects, income-qualified projects also have the additional challenge of navigating the state funding process and affordable housing development can take anywhere from four to 10 years before a project is completed. And five, based on our available state resources, all of our current efforts are focused on maintaining our current shelters, not on increasing the number of shelter spaces. Throughout this last two years, the HIP has remained true to its conception as a responsive, evolving work plan that adapts as needed to the constantly changing world. So with that, we've made updates to the HIP part, as part of this two-year reporting process. This process has provided us an opportunity to incorporate new information that didn't exist in 2022, such as references to the city's strategic plan. Most of the HIP updates we may were minor, but details of any major changes is described in your packet under HIP refinements, which is appendix B of the report. Continued progress on our HIP goals depends largely on general economic conditions beyond the city's direct control, including cost of materials and labor and interest rates. Housing is a big effort. That said, in the last few months, you all have approved LRTs for affordable housing, home and heart recommendations for awards, urban renewal funds for affordable housing at the riverfront, the extension of the safe parking and safe tent site sunset date, three MPTs for 280 units downtown, and the process for disposition, disposition of the North Butterfly Lot through an RFQ process. And there's more to come still. In the near future, you'll have the opportunity to support more pro-housing work through housing actions for urban growth strategies, Affordable Housing Trust Fund project awards, right-of-way involuntary annexation work, and wastewater extension projects. I won't share any spoilers today, but the six-month progress update for July through December of 2024, which is the six months following the two-year report period, is in your packet. And then previous six-month updates can be found on the HIP website. Um, so thanks for having me today. I hope this overview got you excited to dive into the full report. There's a lot more information there. But myself and a couple of HIP folks are here and available to take your questions.
Thank you, Amber. Thank you, staff. I'm going to ask one quick clarifying question because we have heard a lot about this particular topic in public comment in recent weeks. You just mentioned, uh, Amber, the effectiveness of the LRT programs and several recent council, council actions to support and urban renewal agency actions related to funding and MPT projects. Can you offer a clarification as to the difference in a project and in its feasibility between a tax exemption that reaches into the future and, uh, direct immediate funding or, uh, what people might understand to be funding related to our general fund? I ask this question because there's, there's, I think, been a lot of misunderstanding about the difference between those mechanisms. And I'm just curious if, if staff could offer a little bit of, um, clarity around that.
Yeah, I see that Will has unmuted his mic, so I'm going to let him go ahead and take that one.
Yep. Uh, happy to speak to that. So in, in general, there's, there's a difference for the developer and a difference for the city and how we look at that. So a, um, uh, any kind of proactive subsidy that we do, such as using the Affordable Housing Trust Funds to provide, uh, to help affordable housing projects move forward, is, um, us taking funds from any number of sources, uh, and putting those proj, uh, funds towards the project. And so in that case, we are essentially writing a check to make that development happen. We primarily use this tool for affordable housing to help those project pencil, help them subsidize the cost of, uh, of housing and, um, and to make those projects feasible. And importantly for the development, they get that as part of their initial capital funding. And so it, it's money that they have on the front end and it, uh, it decreases the amount of money that they have to pay with other sources to make the project happen. The other kind of, uh, thing that we do is we do a tax exemption. And so we have tax exemptions for affordable housing, uh, through the LRT. And then we have, um, some market rate, uh, development is eligible for tax exemptions through the MPT program. In those situations, the city does not spend money on the, on the projects. The city foregoes the possibility of future revenue. For a LRT, that's a 20-year time period. That's potentially renewable. For the, for the MPT, that's a 10-year time year or timeframe, uh, upon which point that the property begins paying taxes. So the city does not go out of pocket with any cost. The city foregoes the opportunity, potential revenue. And, um, and then the, uh, the benefits of the projects is a decrease in their operational costs because instead of paying taxes each year during that timeframe, they get to save that money and they can use that to, um, pay a larger loan payment or to, um, to collect less money in rent or whatever they need to do in order to, uh, pencil, make the project pencil and be financially feasible during that time.
Thank you very much, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Will and Amber, thank you very much for the report and the information. Amber, how would you stack up the current nature of the city's planning with regard to the HIP compared to the new state recommend, or the new state mandates that we're going to have to see the city produce 1,600 units a year? How are we doing compared to what's going to be expected of us?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I'll start with the main differences between the HIP and the urban growth strategies work that you're talking about. So the HIP was built really considering what resources and funding mechanisms we have. So what, what can we reasonably expect to be done with the resources we have? The urban growth strategies work is considering the whole community need, regardless of the resources available. So the targets that we set within the HIP, they had funding forecasted backing into those numbers. Where the urban growth strategies, um, we have a number, a target that we need to hit, and there's no consideration for it, um, how we'll pay for that. The other thing I'll mention is that the timing, so the, the goals that'll be set by the urban growth strategies are the future. They won't start until after the HIP period has ended. But if we were to compare, um, these apples and oranges, not exactly the same things, our current units that we're seeing each year are not in alignment with where they need to be to meet urban growth strategy's goals. And they're especially low in the, um, income-qualified, income-qualified, um, category. If you want specific numbers, I, I can follow up with you to say.
Well, I, I agree with you. I agree with you. Uh, I'd go so far as to say the choices we are making are failing on a radical basis. We are, as a city, not implementing policies that allow the market the ability to grow at the rate at which people need us to, the rate at which people expect us to. And I, I think our strategies are insufficient to the need. I don't believe we will ever be able to afford enough subsidized housing for us to look at that and, and continue to subsidize housing as a means of trying to solve this problem. We need a broader strategy and I suggest that we have ourselves an upcoming council retreat on the goal of dealing with a long-term sustainable budget. I'd say these two things are interactive, you know, they, they're intertwined. But, um, I think we need to take a much broader and a, and a much more intense approach to our homelessness and our homes and our housing crisis locally than we are doing. The, I don't believe the strategies we have in place are sufficient to the need. And I hope we will do that work as time goes on. Thank you.
Counselor Kucinski.
Councilor Kaczynski. Thank you, and thank you for your work on this project. This is, I think, one of the most serious and complex challenges that we're facing as a city. And so getting real solutions in place is critically important. I was going to ask about the intersection between the state goals and the HIP goals, and that question's been answered. So thank you, Councilor Clark, and thank you for answering it. I had another question that's specifically about our population's data and how we're looking at need and what types of housing we need. One of the things, there was a chart in here that looked at comparisons with peer cities. And when we're looking at sort of our numbers for median household income and things like that, are we... How does the student population or other populations where the household might have less income but might have other resources that mean that they have different affordability needs factoring into those numbers? I mentioned it because I noticed that both us and Corvallis tend to be on the low end of those median households income numbers. And also our communities with larger student populations than, say, Springfield or Grusham.
So our need numbers are coming from the state, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. And they do have methodology information online of how they have set up that methodology. I'm not an expert on the methodology. I could get you links to those resources. And I know our planning folks will be here visiting you in June to talk all about all things Urban Growth Strategies and Oregon Housing Needs. So they might clear that up for you then, but I can bring you, I can get you the methodology after.
Okay, yeah, that would be great because I think if we're just looking at like high-level summary numbers, knowing sort of what is making up that summary and how that might impact our needs is helpful. And, you know, I will say, I think overall, it's a very challenging situation. You articulated a lot of challenges, but it was good to see, you know, some of those goals. Were we able to say, hey, we met that goal, even if we know that that's not necessarily enough in the long run? But thank you for all your work.
Councilor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Amber, for the presentation. I think that's really good information. I couldn't agree more with what Councilor Clark said about your ability to produce housing or create opportunities for housing to be produced. I'm concerned with our current available lands inventory, which I know planning staff are working on that, but I think that's part of the issue. Certainly, cost of construction right now with supply chain and work labor shortages is creating an issue. But I also want to put in a plug, as I frequently do, for economic development. You know, the other half of affordable housing is living wage jobs. And having work here for them, whether it's industry, manufacturing, whatever it is, that's helping to pay people living wage jobs will help us with this situation. So I want to plug on that as well. I also appreciated the line of questioning that Councilor Kaczynski brought up. I think it's important that we understand these definitions and what they actually mean. And that's part of being able to tell our story. And then the last thing I had, I guess I would direct this towards you, Will, if that's okay. And it's about the MPT. I frequently hear how lucrative the MPT is and that it's not needed to produce housing. So do we have developers actually lined up around the block trying to get in here and do projects? That's a serious question.
Yeah. Thank you for that. I think that there's two parts of the MPT, there's two ways to answer that. The first has to do with the, there's a process through the, in the MPT where there's a multiple financial analysis. So staff does a financial analysis based on materials in the application, and then that goes to a third-party consultant to review. And then that's in turn reviewed by the MPT panel, the community panel. But the other part of this is that with the existence of the MPT program, we've seen, we've seen no projects move forward since the program's been revised in 2016 that have been within the downtown core. The one that's, we have one that's on its way with 1059 Willamette. It's received other city subsidies. We'll see what, as that one move forward with, hopefully, in the near future. But nothing else has happened in the kind of, in the immediate core downtown. We've seen a couple of projects make use of it to the north, northeast, and east sides of the downtown boundary. That being said, we've also seen one project receive a MPT and not move forward in the downtown core. We've seen a couple of other projects get proposed and talked to us about the potential to move forward and then not move forward for financial reasons. And so with the existence of the program, we've seen fewer than one project per year that has the ability to move forward. And multiple projects decide that there's still not enough financial wherewithal for them to be able to proceed.
Thank you for that. And then the other question I had, we also frequently hear how some of the student housing, which is true, has been built without MPTs. Are those calculated differently from a developer's standpoint? And the reason I'm asking is our son, before he graduated from college in another state, was living in this setup that had individual bedrooms and bathrooms, but a shared kitchen and living room space. So, but he was paying what he would pay for an apartment, a one-bedroom apartment. And everybody in that arena were paying the same amount. So they were living in a much smaller square footage, which seems to me that would pencil out differently than a market rate or affordable or a low-income multi-unit development. Can you speak to that?
Sure, yeah, I think the, and I wasn't working on the MPT program when council made the decision to revise it. But I think that what council was recognizing is that student housing projects have a different financial math than other housing projects. And it's for two reasons. So first is that, like you said, they, because they're high amenity focused on community. For a student community, they charge a high per-square-foot rate. And so they are able to get rents that are not available to people targeting or to developments that target more of a general population, students included, but focused on the generality population. The other part of it is that with housing, anytime you have commoditized housing, you change the economics of it. And so student housing in general is an economized or a product that can be traded more easily at the national level and is more easily built by national developers. And so the, and the the operational ability for those companies to work is easier than a smaller firm. And so what can happen is that they are, it is easier for them working at a national scale with national investment and trading publicly traded to, it's easier for them to work in thin markets. And so they are able to move forward regardless of what local developers might be facing in terms of challenges. And so many, it's like, I mean, there's a lot of ecological examples, but just because, you know, some plants can do well when most things can't. And that's a, and that's a situation that we can find ourselves in with with development where student housing developers can thrive even if a local developer can't produce something that would serve the general population.
Thank you, Will. That is helpful. I will also add that most students have access to grants, scholarships, or at least low-interest or no-interest loans until they graduate. And so their financial situation, I think, is frequently different than people who are just out there trying to make ends meet. And so, anyway, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Offer a clarifying note for those following along at home that student housing projects do not qualify for the MPT program and have not for about 10 years. If I'm not, if I've got the date right as to when this body took that action to revise the MPT program and shift towards a workforce housing priority. Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks. Pretty sobering report. In particular, the affordable housing numbers, goal of 835, we've got 196. That's not even, that's not even a quarter of what we need for the five-year goal. And the economics, they're the root of a big part of this, a problem. Big part of this is the root, is the economics of it. And of course, the solution is more family wage jobs. And that's what we need in this economy. That's hard to come by. And I think, you know, one of the bright spots, though, was the downtown area market-based housing has been a boon recently. But the rest of it is kind of dismal. Can you explain the difference between permanent supportive housing and affordable housing for those watching at home?
Yeah, permanent supportive housing is housing specifically for folks that are like moving out of chronic homelessness situation. So there's a lot more social supports built in. And, but it's not temporary. So they can live there long-term, but it has more social supports than, say, just an affordable housing unit where the rents are being maintained at an affordable rate. There's not necessarily any social supports helping you in your day-to-day life and staying in that situation.
Right, right. And that's a critical piece, niche that we need to fill to help people into that kind of housing, more permanent housing. But affordable housing is really what we really need. Have we built any market-based affordable housing units in the last five years that have all been subsidized?
So you're asking, I think you're asking, do we have like naturally affordable?
Yeah, any occurring in the marketplace without a subsidy?
So we don't have data on that exactly. But I did a, the city did a review of multi-unit market rate rent assessment in 2024 and looked at about 23 developments that were over 20 years old. Because that's when we expect rents to become affordable, is after they've been on the market for 20 years. And based on what we found, our estimate would be that less than 20% of, less than 13% of the units in the community that are over 20 years old are probably naturally occurring. And that's for those older units. I think you're asking, are we having things out of the ground that are affordable? And I would say no.
Yeah, yeah, the answer is zero. Yeah. And the, since the federal government, Trump administration, is going away as a partner in housing, it was really going to fall onto the state and local governments to do that. And I applaud Governor Kotek's focus on creating more housing units and keeping that up and focusing on getting the dollars for it, both regular market-based housing and affordable housing. Locally, we're not doing so well. We're not even close to meeting our goals or actually, given the trajectory, we're never going to meet our goals. And I totally agree with Councilor Clark, my friend Mike, that current strategies are not working. They're insufficient to do what we need to do. And we definitely need to shake things up. Given all of our affordable housing is subsidized, one of the issues in that particular area, which I think is the most dire of all of this, is that we have lack of funds, especially in that affordable housing piece. I mean, so we have several options. We can increase the CET from a half percent to 1%, like many other cities have already done. We could do a bond. Some cities have done that. We could increase fees or taxes. So we've looked at all these options. We just haven't really centered on anything and the ability to actually create those funds that we need. But that lack of affordable housing is really the root cause of homelessness, as pointed out in the report. I mean, I've said this many times, homelessness is the symptom. Lack of affordable housing, lack of substance abuse treatment, and lack of mental health treatment are the problems. And they've gone unresolved for a very long, very long time, baked for decades. So we solve those, we can solve housing, homelessness, I mean.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I have taken quite a bit of your words to heart, Mayor. When you ran your campaign, and the things that I know are near and dear to your heart. So this is one of those moments where I appreciate my friend, Councilor Zelenka's words on this, but I think he and I are saying very nearly the same thing, that our strategies may not be sufficient to the need and to the challenge. And I suggest that time is perfect for us to consider some sort of housing summit locally in this new year, to bring together experts that we can take a deep dive on the tools that we have available, the things that we don't, the need on a different scale level, and how we can best address our role in a market that's having difficulty right now to be the most help to see better results. And I think we're at a time where it requires a large-scale effort by a lot of smart people. And certainly, there are those in the community beyond ourselves who could be good resources for this. So I'd ask you to consider calling for such a thing. And I thank you.
Councilor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. We may not have to call for such a summit. If House Bill 3644 passes, as I understand it, it calls for a regional assessment to properly plan and produce an annual report with planning partners who are defined as shelter providers, local jurisdictions, housing authorities, community action agencies, continuums of care, in this case, the county, day center service providers, rehousing service providers, county mental health providers, and coordinated care organizations. My question is, Amber or Will, should that bill pass, HB 3644, how does that, as requested by the governor, and I believe Rep. Marsh is driving that effort on the House side, how does that change our goals when it comes to increasing stability and safety with temporary shelter support services? That two-year goal that Amber mentioned, does it reduce our municipal goal but allow for more emergency shelter? Or does it increase the goal? And are we at the table as a local jurisdiction? Or is the responsibility shifted to our county partners?
I can dive into that question. I think the, you know, the intent with the HIP is to be an evolving document and to document where we are as a community and as, I actually really did, sorry, it's really to document the city's work plan around housing. And so it's, and so in that sense that Amber and the team have made to the document, it's to pull in all of the new information, whether those are decisions and local actions, like the strategic plan, as Amber mentioned, or whether those are external considerations like the economy and things that are moving on at the state level, to put all of that in and to say, based on here where we are, here's what we're hoping to do, here's things that we are doing, and here's where we would like to get. And so I think in that context, there's an opportunity for us with the HIP to take new information coming through state legislation, to pull that in to say, this is a part of what we're doing, we're participating. And then to use that as a way to look forward and to be clear about what we are, what we're participating in, what we're accomplishing, what we're doing as a team, as a city staff team. And then to share that with council, share that with the community, and to kind of all be on the same page. So the HIP becomes that opportunity to document that and communicate that. I think as we move forward, understanding our role with the county and understanding our role with the state is going to be an important thing. I don't have all the information at this point to tell you exactly how we're going to do that. But we will do it. Housing is local and regional both, and so we'll participate as the local municipality and as part of a larger region.
Thank you, staff, and thank you, council, for...
Thank you, staff, and thank you, council, for that discussion. I will just offer in response to Counselor Clark's overture that certainly, as your mayor, as a licensed architect and a person who's been working very intensively in housing advocacy over this last ten years, that there are certainly, I think, some opportunities before us in terms of continued engagement. And I look forward to being intensively involved in that work. And I've had, I think, some very encouraging conversations with different members of our community, and people are certainly very hopeful about Eugene's continued work and continued success in this arena. It is an enormous challenge for our community, but we have a history of rising to the challenge, so we're going to keep up that. With that, I will just say thank you again to staff for a couple of very important updates, both, both types of infrastructure in our community, looking at our streets and that system and our housing priorities and that continued work. Look forward to the next follow-up discussions mentioned related to both topics. And with that, this concludes our agenda for today. So I will now close the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five City Council Work Session, and we are adjourned.